The city of Bristol, providing beautiful parks, economic development, and a family-friendly community.
Okay, good evening, everyone. We're going to get started with our joint meeting. I'm going to call to order for 6:45 on December 8th. For those of you who are able, please stand and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Okay, we're going to ask everyone to mute themselves because we are experiencing some noise here in the chambers, and you can unmute yourself if you're going to be speaking. The first item on tonight's agenda is the approval of the minutes of the regular joint meeting from November 10th, 2020. Is there a motion?
Move approval.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion, corrections? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. The second item is our consent calendar, which has various items on it. Does anybody have any interest in pulling off any items for further discussion? Hearing none, is there a motion to approve the consent calendar?
Move approval.
Motion has been made? Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion on the motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries. The third item is to transfer $31,000 from the general fund contingency account to retirement professional fees for financial advisory services. So moved.
Second.
Hearing none? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item four, to make an additional appropriation of $158,182 within the sewer operating and assessment fund for remediation and cleanup costs at the Cherry Hill Drive pumping station.
Move approval.
Second. Discussion. Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item five is to decrease appropriations totaling $105,431 within the capital projects fund to close out projects. So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item six is to make additional appropriations totaling $70,260 within the capital projects fund for Wilkett Street reconstruction design services and Center Square parking lot. So moved. Second. Motion has been made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item seven is to transfer $50,000 from the general fund contingency account to railroad miscellaneous.
Move approval.
Second. Discussion.
I don't remember that coming before the Finance Board.
Um... Seven.
When did we vote on that?
That was voted on at the November meeting?
Okay, for some, it just not ringing about, sorry. Thank you.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item eight is to transfer $18,000 within the Public Works operating budget.
Move approval.
Second. Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item nine is to make transfers totaling $137,500 within the general fund to operating transfer out special revenue.
Move approval.
Second. Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item 10, to transfer $38,155 within the equipment building sinking fund.
Move approval.
Second. Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item 11 is to transfer $13,345 from the equipment building sinking fund contingency account. So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And the last, to make an additional appropriation totaling $237,500 within the equipment building sinking fund to purchase an automated rubbish truck. So moved.
Second.
Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And next item is the monthly revenue and expense report presentation by Diane Waldron,
Good evening, everyone. You have the report in front of you, just a couple of things that I do want to highlight.
Closer to the microphone.
You can't hear?
They probably can't.
Um, you know, we're doing really well with our tax collections. I think the tax collectors, you know, are, is really on top of it. Our current tax revenues right now, we are basically in line where we were last year, so I'm happy to see that in light of the way the economy has been going over the last 10 months or so. But we currently are at 56.2% of the budget. Last year, we were at 56.5. The prior year tax revenue was a little bit behind where we were last year at this time, but still, we've collected $758,000. What I've done, the tax collector is able to provide me with this report monthly, and I've asked her to just give me, provide me with a graph of where we are with the current, this is current collections only, real estate, personal property, and motor vehicle. Keep in mind, through the end of November, we've collected 52.19% of real estate. The second half will come in in July, and then we'll watch and see how that comes in throughout the rest of the year, and as far as where we'll end up with the collection rate at the end of the year. Personal property, we're at 54.37% collected, and then motor vehicles is at 87.3, and that's the only one that is in due in one installment, and motor vehicle usually is a little bit lagging compared to the real estate and the personal property. So this is nothing out of the norm. This is actually where we expect we would be at this time of the year. Any questions on that? I thought it would be helpful to have that information. Building permit revenue, we are at 64.3%. Last year, we were at 68.3, but we did increase the budget number this year when we were working on the budget, so number-wise, we're ahead about $60,000 from where we were last year at this time. And then on our conveyance fees, we're a little bit ahead as well compared to where we were last year. We're at 77.8, and last year, we're at 68.3%. Investment earnings is something we are going to have to watch. It's pitiful, actually. The interest rates just are not there just yet, so right now, we are just under 20% of budget, and we should be almost at 45% roughly at this point of the year. So we'll keep an eye on that. We've been very fortunate the last few years. We've been able to generate additional investment income in excess of between 500 to, I think one year, it was almost $900,000 more than we had budgeted, but I don't see that happening this year at all. And we did reduce the budget this year for 2021. As far as expenditures go, the only thing, again, I'll just note, when you're going through the expenditure report, if you happen to see some COVID-related items and some wages, a lot of that, we're hoping will be reimbursed either through FEMA for the storm or from FEMA, it will be reimbursed and put back in. I do have good news to report with regard to FEMA. We finally did get an obligation from them. They did approve, of the 424,000 we had submitted, they did approve 328,000 as eligible expenses, reimbursed at 75%, will be receiving $246,000 approximately. And I know that request did go in, so hopefully, I hope we'll see that, those funds soon. With regard to the Coronavirus Relief Fund with the state, we did actually receive our approval and reimbursement, which shocked me that we received it as quickly as we did. I think we submitted at October, September 29th, and we received it at the middle of October, October 29th, so within a month, we had the money. We did get notification from OPM that the additional money for all of the costs from July 1st through the end of the year, we are very happy in my office because we had to actually put everything in, individual invoice, individual check. It was crazy, the amount of information we had to provide to the state for that reimbursement. They are not doing it that way for the balance. What they're going to do is wherever funds are left over and remaining from the Coronavirus Relief Fund that they've allocated to the municipalities, they are going to distribute it on a population basis. So that will definitely ease the administrative burden by providing them all of that information. So that was really good news, and we were happy to hear that. Any questions on that, Edwell? But as those funds do come in, we'll record them as revenues. Some of the funds will need to get allocated, like to the Burlington Health District and also to the Water Department because we did actually submit on their behalf as well through FEMA and the Coronavirus Relief Fund. So when we have those details, I can provide that at that time. The audit, we do have a draft. Our office, my office has already gone through and looked at it, and we are hoping that it will be issued, if not by the end of this week, by the end of next week. So that will be nice to have that done before December 31st, as has happened in the past. And budget update, all the budget forms have gone out to the departments. They have their instructions, and that's where we are right now. So, any questions?
I just wanted to say that I know you had mentioned last month you were going to try to include some of those visuals in that reporting, and it was kind of cool to see. So thank you for kind of including that. I thought that was interesting. I also thought it was kind of interesting how much we received in building permits, and it kind of makes sense with all the COVID projects that people have probably been doing around their house. People have a lot of time to be at home and think about things like that, so yeah, just wanted to add that it was a good value. So thanks for including it in your report.
You're welcome.
Are you seeing anything with the audit preliminary discussions?
With regard to...
Anything of interest?
No, it actually went very well. You know, they did have to do a lot of it remote. There are no, to my knowledge, there are no comments, nothing of significance, no audit findings. I think there was one issue we had with purchasing, but I think we resolved that because it was a special situation with regard to, I think it was special ed. But other than that, everything, everything went really smoothly this year. We were very happy. Our, all of the reports we needed for pension and OPEB, we received them on time. I know last year, that held us up about two or three weeks, so yeah, it went a little smoothly, not what I hope, hope it happens like that next year, too.
And as we've done for the past three years, we've picked a small microcosm to do a special audit on. Do you know when we'll have the results of the police payroll and overtime audit?
So I do know that they have completed all of the interviews with police, all of those involved in the police process at the Police Department, and they have completed the audit interviews on the controller's side as well as the information systems, those that are involved there. And I think also even those that are involved on the IT end at the Police Department as well. Right now, they're in the middle of testing, so they have asked for a listing of the police payrolls, certain payrolls, so they are in the middle of testing that right now. So I would anticipate maybe a couple of weeks, they might have a final report.
Okay, great.
Through the chair. I was just going to just suggest that there is an audit committee of the Board of Finance that maybe we get a chance to review some of those sub audits in this audit with the controller. Thank you.
Does anybody have any other comments or questions for the controller? Okay, thank you. So is there a motion to adjourn?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We're going to start the city council meeting in just a couple of minutes. It is the same call-in, so nobody needs to disconnect from the call if you're interested in staying on for the regular city council meeting that will be starting shortly. Well, look who's back. All right. Good evening, everyone. We're going to call to order our December 8th city council meeting. I'd like to ask all of you to stand and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Would the members of the city council please introduce themselves, starting on my far right?
Peter Kelly, Second District.
Scott Rosato, District One.
Dave Proleski, District Two.
Mary Fortier, District Three.
And on the call tonight, we have Councilwoman Brittany Barney, District Three, and Councilman Greg Han, District One, who are helping us out by remoting in so that we could have more distance up here on the dais. First, we've done our opening ceremonies. I'd like to just have a moment of reflection to begin our meeting, thinking about all of our veterans in respect of Iwo Jima, which was celebrated in Pearl Harbor Day yesterday. Thank you. Our second item is the approval of minutes of the regular city council meeting on November 10th, 2020, and the special city council meeting from October 20th, 2020. So moved. Any discussion, questions, corrections? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Under public participation, we do have a spotlight tonight, and I'd like to introduce Scott Lodge. He is the president of the newly-formed Bristol Little League. He's here tonight with Vicky Sirica, the new secretary, and Brett Karen, the second vice president. There may be some more of your board members joining us on the call that we would like to ask everyone on the call to mute themselves. And I'd like to ask Scott to come forward and talk to us about this long-awaited development of our three Little Leagues merging into one. Everybody here on the dais has a relationship. We have McCabe's parents over here. We have Forestville over here. We have Edgewood over there. So we're really interested in, like most of the community, very invested in what's happening with the fate of Little League in our community. Many of us have been involved.
Who's this "me"?
I don't know, but they...
That's, I'm "me", can you hear me?
But we can't hear anybody else.
Okay, I'm Laura Carter.
Hi, Laura, you just...
And I have a call up.
Laura, we need to just...
What is going on?
Can you hear me?
Laura, we're...
You should be able to hear me, but it's not, my mic here is not...
We don't need to hear you.
Okay, there we go. Okay.
Dawn, any clue what's going on?
It's Laura Carter.
Laura, Laura, you're, Laura, you're creating a problem with our recording at the council meeting.
Okay, I thought, I thought you said, "Who's "me"? And I was telling you who he was.
Yeah, you need, you need to mute yourself, please. Okay, well, sorry about that.
So, we're very interested in these developments as we head into what is the traditional registration time in winter, looking forward to spring. And if you could just be directly right into the microphone so everyone can pick up on it, we'd love for you to share with us some of the developments and how the Bristol Little League was formed over the last couple of months.
Well, thank you, and thank you for having us and inviting us here tonight. We greatly appreciate it. I'm Scott Lodge. I'm the new president for Bristol Little League. Just a brief history on, you know, where we are. So recently, over the last couple of months, we did get chartered to be one Little League by all three Little Leagues combined, McCabe, Forestville, and Edgewood. With the ability to do that, we basically took five members of each board and combined it together to be one Bristol Little League Board. So we have an odd number of folks, but we have, you know, but we have everybody equally represented from the three leagues to make sure that every league was being represented and that we look forward to the future together. As I said, that, you know, one of the things we've started to do is get ourselves out into the community. We have a Facebook page open up, and we have an Instagram page, and we have a new website, bristolctll.com is our website, is our webpage, so we can also get Facebook.
We still get, against the chambers, their line is muted. Whatever computers in chambers
It won't unmute. Dawn, you're the host. It's showing you as the host. On.
Everything is muted. Rose is unmuted, so now Dawn and Teresa just need to mute themselves, so we should
Go ahead, Scott, see if they can hear you.
Hopefully, hopefully, everybody can hear me. Just as a quick recap for those that didn't, Bristol Little League came together by all three leagues, McCabe, Forestville, and Edgewood, deciding to take a leap of faith and come together to create something new for our city. We are a board of 15. We took five people from each of the three leagues to make sure that every league had equal representation, but we still kept it at an odd number. Working together, we have put together a new Facebook page. We're also on Instagram, and bristolctll.com is our webpage. We introduced ourselves recently on our Facebook page through a video put together by our communications director, John Murray, our lead tech guy. That video actually made it all the way to Williamsport. Stephen Keener, the president of Little League, saw the video and has put it out to all of the district administrators within Little League to use that as a way to introduce yourselves to your league, which I thought was, was amazing, and that blew me away that it got, that it got that far. So we are also, you know, we had a great article written by David Greenleaf that went out yesterday in the Bristol Press to help give a little bit more background on, you know, who we are and how we got here. We're really looking to get out into the community as much as, as much as we can because obviously, we're going to take it very seriously that we are Bristol Little League first and foremost. We have our first fundraiser coming up in January 18th, where we're, as a new league, we're also going to be working with the new, with the new business in Cravings on the 18th, and it's going to be a day-long fundraiser working with them. So new league, new business, it seemed like a perfect opportunity, and thank you to our, you know, to our team in getting that together. You know, it's a start of what we want to do, you know, get out more with local businesses, be a part of the fabric of the community, you know, really looking to create something that is going to be just really beneficial to the children and families of our city. We are looking to start registration on January 1st. That way, it gives us time to get everybody registered, start putting together tryouts, building teams, but January 1st is going to be our launch date for that. And I think we wanted to be known that every child in the city that, if they're willing and eligible, they're going to be able to play. You know, I think that's, that's a key for us. We're not, we're open to everyone. We're not going to turn anyone away. You know, as a, you know, tax-exempt company and as a, you know, organization through Little League, that's what they choose, so that's what we follow. And it's going to be really important to get that out there. In addition, you know, we are working with parks. We're going to work with the Board of Ed. The mayor's already been great, great for us to help really build ourselves within the community. We're working, going to work with parks to help with our, to help with our facilities. And I was even in conversations earlier today with Josh Maderos about the possibility for, to my knowledge, the first time ever, having our juniors and seniors teams play at Muzzy Field if it's available. I think that would be a great way to bring our league into, you know, our historic diamond. I know the facility is undergoing substantial renovations on the field, but hopefully, come late summer or late spring, early summer, we can, we can put something together. But if not for this year, because, you know, there's scheduling or issues with the field, we're at least getting those conversations started to, to allow for that, which I think would be great. You know, just really thankful for the support that we've received so far. You know, most of, you know, it's very easy for things to be negative these days, but a lot of the, a lot of the comments that we've been seeing have been very positive. So everybody is looking forward to this, and we're looking forward to making sure that they have a good experience in there, you know, that the trust that we're building is going to be built upon and be, you know, something that we can really hang our hats on going forward.
So, one question from one of my McCabe alumni. What's the deal with the city series now, since we, that tradition is going to be hard to adapt?
I think there's a...
And where's the trophy going?
Well, we'll find a place for the, right now, the trophy does actually reside in Forestville because the last time we had one, Forestville won.
Right.
But I do think going forward, we'll find, we'll find a home for it. We could still call it city series. I know Bristol Girls refers to their, their league championship as city series, and we can keep that going forward. You know, one of the things that we're looking to do is be mindful of the past because there's a lot of history, you know, with Little League in this city. So we want to be mindful of that and look for opportunities to acknowledge that. I mean, even going, you know, looking at our logo. Our logo combines the colors, blue, green, red, used by all the leagues in the, over the, over the history. Anytime you see anything on the logo, we have a few different logos. If it's three home plates or three stars, that's a nod to the three leagues themselves that, that came together as one. So looking at opportunities for that to still have something, and hopefully, this year, we can actually try to get it done before All-Stars instead of in September, when everybody's already packed it in for the year. But it will obviously come down to, you know, how early All-Star starts this year, field availability and things like that. But we still, we'll plan on having a league championship. It's just, you know, it's just going to, we can still call it the city series. We still have the trophy. The trophy has the plaques from all the history. There's no reason to go away from that.
Excuse me, Scott?
Yes.
I'm right here. Are you going to have both majors and minors?
Yes. We plan on having from T-ball all the way up to senior program, so it'll be...
The way it always has been.
Yeah, the way it's always been. So we'll have T-ball, A, which is predominantly a coach pitch, Double A, where we start to introduce kids pitching, Triple A, traditional minors, majors. We're going to have a 50-70 division, which is moving slightly up before you get to the big diamond, and then we will have juniors and seniors on the big diamond.
And you're still going to draft players?
Yes. We plan on doing a draft this year at Triple A and majors and building it that way. So one of the things that we're going to be mindful of, especially with the younger divisions, is to try to build teams around where they live and the fields closest to them. You know, having, the biggest win in all of this was retaining all three facilities because by doing that, we're able to leverage them even more than we were when we were three individual leagues. So if we're, one of the things that we will look to try to do as best we can is for those younger divisions, try to keep them close to the fields closest to them. And then when you get to Triple A on up, now you're doing a draft, and now you're building, you know, you're building teams that way. But, you know, the, the great thing is now, it will be known, you know, citywide that you can start at four and graduate at 16. You know, having, having them all the way through the program because it's, that's always been there, but I don't know if everybody always knew it unless it was just part of the fabric of what you did. So the fact that we'll get that out there, too, will be helpful.
That's an incredible feeder system for the high schools when you have that.
Absolutely.
Are there any other questions? Did you want to just quickly recognize your board members that have joined us online in here? There's quite a few of them, which really is a great reflection of the enthusiasm and the thoughtful way that this is being rolled out. I see...
So I see, I see David Greenleaf up there. I see Doreen DeZakowski. David Greenleaf will be our player agent, and he's basically our league historian. I see Doreen DeZakowski, who will be working with our concessions this year. Tiffany Karen is helping with fundraising, so Tiffany, again, thank you for your help in getting our first fundraiser up and running. John Murray, who I see, is our, our lead technical guy, basically our communications director, but he wears the hats of pretty much all of our tech stuff. but he wears the hats of pretty much all of our tech stuff.
We might need to borrow him.
Trying to see what else. I mean, I don't recognize a lot of the phone numbers, but to anybody that is there from the league tonight, thank you very much for attending and supporting, and to Brett and Vicky for coming to be with us tonight. I really appreciate all the efforts behind everybody. This board so far has just been phenomenal. In the times that we've been reading weekly to make sure we get out in front of everything, and the energy that everybody's bringing in just, you know, roughly a month since we've incorporated, we carry that through. We're going to do great things, and we're really looking forward to it.
There's so many opportunities, too, with Muzzy and the fact that you won't be having to practice on little squares of grass throughout the city. Vicky and I have been host parents for Bristol Blues, which I think is another great connection back to the Little Leagues, and really some great potential there that may not have been realized in the past because of the fact that it was three different Little Leagues at different levels at different times, and I think it was hard for the Blues to latch on, so to speak.
Yeah, and I think what's, I mean, even, you know, as far as, I've been speaking with Bunty Ray to start, you know, looking to the Armory for some help, and he's been very receptive. We're looking to continue that, you know, throughout other areas for support. I've heard from some coaches that want to put clinics together, some high school coaches that want to put clinics together to help us out. So it seems like a lot of people are rallying behind this, and we just want to continue to make it, make everybody, you know, just feel good about being a part of it.
Yeah. For those of us who have been involved over the years, seeing the numbers decline a little bit as kids got interested in other sports and that type of thing, we've all felt that this is something that should have been done. But it's hard when you have kids approaching that magical 12-year-old year, and you don't want to deprive them of those experiences. So I really give you a lot of credit for getting it done, because I think it's going to be a very good position for the kids involved in baseball in this town.
Thank you. I mean, that was the hardest part. I mean, we have people on our board who's, who are children are entering their, you know, 12-year-old year, and that's difficult.
Yeah.
And that's something that we have to be really cognizant of, too, because they were always expecting to graduate as a McCabe player, as an Edgewood player, as a Forestville player. So that'd be something to keep in mind. But being able to practice on actual baseball fields will be a world of difference. And, you know, that's something that, you know, like I said, it's, I do think we're going to make more use of the facilities as one league than we did when it was three separate leagues in three separate facilities, so we can leverage a lot more of that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for being here tonight. Thanks, everyone. So there was no one here in chambers that has signed up for public participation. Is there anyone on the call that would like to address the city council?
Can't unmute. Yes, I would like to.
Could you please give us your name and address for the record?
Yes, Laura Carter, 77 Goodwin Street in Bristol.
Okay, the floor is yours, Laura.
Thanks. I live across the street from the Bristol Hospital. I've dealt with a lot of people, and I'm kind of dead-ending, and I don't know if this is the right place to go, but I just wanted to get some information out there. I have some cognitive issues, so I may get really stuck for words. I'll be patient. And if I carry on too long, try to stop me, because I don't shut up sometimes. Living across the hospital has been a problem for a long time, but it really wasn't terrible until the trees between Goodwins, between the hospitals and the homes started to die. And they were very big, high pine trees. When they, I ignored them when they were dead, because I figured it was better to have no trees than, trees and no trees. All right, I'm getting ahead of myself. Right now, there is a little bit of landscaping. However, it's not. I just want to talk to you about particular problems. I'll try not to get carried away again. Idling cars and idling trucks have been, it's gotten to the point where it's, it's hard to say, to talk about it. But I would like to talk about idling at some point. There is actually a state law for a three-minute idling limit. I know nobody really applies it, but given the situation where there is large expanse of parking lot with no real landscaping to absorb any of the chemicals, you know, carbon monoxide, et cetera, there's, it's not really healthy, I don't think, for the neighborhood. My thought is to put up signs either around the area or in the hospital lots. And I think even in town anywhere where there's a parking lot that's close to someone's house, to just because it's, we don't really talk about pollution much, but it's, you should see my windows. My windows are, because the construction's been going on for a year. If you look at the dirt on my windows, that's all getting into my house. And the idling is one of the ways it's coming in. To the next topic, vibrating homes. I know there's a state law where if someone is doing construction, then there should not be vibrations off of their, outside of their property. There's a lot of vibration outside the property. Sometimes it feels like the house is shaking, or it is shaking, because the windows are shaking. I think some of you know that there was, there's been a couple of times, there were, there was massive jackhammering one night. I think it was a Sunday, and my neighbor called the police, and they said, well, they must have a permit, but nobody was going to check for a permit. And then again, a couple of weeks ago, you know, eight to nine o'clock, ripping up a parking lot. And here's what they do. They rip it up and they throw it into the back of the truck. So every time they throw them into the back of the truck, everything shakes. So if somebody could kind of look into that, you know, the state law about vibration off the property. I have total respect that there's a hospital there. I, right now, especially, I have total respect for, especially the frontline workers, you know, the nurses, the doctors, so I don't want to minimize that at all. However, they are directly in a neighborhood, and I know in 2014, the whole situation, the hospital being in a neighborhood, was supposed to be in the plan. I can't remember what the plan is that goes to the state. It's a conservation, conservation plan or something like that. They were talking about this, you know, it's a 24-hour thing, and it's in somebody's front yard, so how do we balance it? I went to the public hearing for the most recent, what's going on right now, and with a 36-person petition, they refused to look at it, just tucked it away right away. I was put down by the hospital's lawyer so that my complaints would not be looked at seriously. At any rate, that did not go well, and my interactions with City Hall in general have not been going very well, nor have the ones at the hospital. The last, the last time I talked to someone at the hospital, I was talking about the fact that I can see from my entire house into the waiting room of the surgical building, which means everyone can see out, you know, my privacy, I have no privacy, and I'm an extremely private person, which has become more so, because I have hundreds of people across the street from me, day after day after day, you know. And what are they going to do? Look into the house, or at the house. At any rate, okay, so the next thing, vibrating house. This was the one thing, if I was going to talk about one thing, it's a nuclear accelerator. Does anyone know anything about the hospital and a nuclear accelerator?
No, we don't, Laura. I can, I can, so I can look into these items for you, but as you're aware, you have brought suit, you are a litigant, you have the
Not anymore.
Well, we're
It wasn't in on time. They dropped it.
Well, you are still within a time window where there's other legal opportunities for you. So all of these are issues that both of your councilwomen have been working on. I'm aware of that. I actually called the hospital the night of the jackhammering, because that was inappropriate for night work. But we are balancing the fact that their project is almost done with the heavy construction, so I do believe that you're going to see some
Two more years.
Well, but
You know, heavy is different, depending on whether it's across the street from your house, or whether you're two miles away, and you look out and you see trees in a sunset.
Right. But the point is, is that there's not much that we can do here at the city council level. And I do understand your concerns, and we have tried to address them, but at this point, there's nothing we can do for you tonight at a city council meeting.
Can you, can you look into this thing? I mean, you cut me off when I said the nuclear accelerator. Can you tell me why that is?
Because there is nothing within their current permitted activities about that, but I can look into that. And I could also look into the environmental law that you referenced regarding the vibrations.
Okay. And also, that's vibrations, that's a construction law.
Yep.
And then there's the idling law. You know, I know that I'm a pain, but when that is right in front of your house, I have severe anxiety issues, trauma-related anxiety issues, privacy issues, and this is constantly in my front yard. And now you're saying you can't talk to me because I filed a suit to the, because the city wouldn't look, the council? Anyway, I'm going to just mention these two other things, just so they're on my list. The excessive lighting, I know Brittany was all, I told her, we need to talk about the lighting. The city, this people, the neighbors should be able to have some kind of a long-term plan. There's a lot, two blocks, two houses over from me, which has been being used as a construction lot. I know that Ellen stopped that, and thank you. I don't think she realized exactly how much of a construction lot. And then on the corner of Condon and Brewster, there's a place with a house which has been taken down and is now being used as parking, valet parking for the hospital. I would like to see the special permit on that. And on the stuff that they were doing, using it as a yard, as a construction yard. The, all right, I'm going to look at my list. Yeah, in 2014, actually, the city told Ellen, who was actually pointing something out, but not the mayor, that they would not be chopping down any more houses for parking. But away they go. You know what's happening right now is they're going to come out here and they're going to say, oh, we don't have enough parking. Where they told the committee that they have more than enough parking. Okay, overall, yeah, the neighbors don't know what's going to happen next. What's going to happen to my house? You know, they put houses, they put parking lots directly up against somebody's house. So at what point, I have to worry, when are they going to park, when are they going to put cars right up against my house? If you go over there and look around at the parking lots, at the edges of the parking lot, I recommend that any of you go at night, look on Goodwin Street and wonder why there's a football field, why there's football field lighting over there when sometimes employees park there, and that's it. All right.
Okay.
Yeah, I think that it's not that horrible of me to come to you. And I don't know if there's another, but I talked to someone recently, because she was on a group, saying that her house is shaking from Main Street.
Well, there's, there's construction on Main Street as well. So the list, Laura, that I have from your comments tonight are the idling issues, the vibrations, the nuclear question, the excessive lighting, the lack of trees, which would be the landscape barrier, as well as the Condon Street at Brewster Valet Parking Lot.
Yeah, and also just overall, long-term plans that, it's funny, because back in maybe the 1900, something, I mean, a while ago, years and years ago, Gary Dupont's wife said, I've lived here for two years. I didn't know you were going to chop down the house across the street from me and make a parking lot. And it's like, oh, how quaint, that she thinks that somebody's going to tell the neighborhood what's going on. In general, this is another thing, is I believe the hospital is sort of outgrown special permit, where a person only has 15 days to know that it's happening, only has 15 days to file suit. That's what happened. I had 15 days to file suit. The Tom Planner told me nothing. He said, I can't tell you what to do. So it did not happen in time, and that's why my case was dismissed. They could not even look at the
Okay.
The content, at the subject matter.
Laura, I'll, I'll take this list
I'm done.
And we will, either I, my office, once we compile some information on these items, or Councilwoman Barney will get back to you with the information that we've discovered.
Okay. The nuclear accelerator is probably the most important that I would like an answer on, because that was very vague, and that's a really strange thing to have in a neighborhood without
Okay.
Asking the neighbors. All right, thank you. I'm going to unmute now. Have a good night.
Thank you, Laura. Is there anyone else on the call, joining us remotely, that would like to address the city council? Okay, moving on to announcements. I will start with my far left.
None from me, thank you.
Your Honor, may I talk about shopping this holiday season?
As long as you get close to the microphone.
Okay. Thank you, Your Honor. What I'd like to remind the citizens is that this holiday season is a very important holiday season for our local retailers. I want to remind everyone that the city came out with an initiative, a marketing campaign, to make the community aware that they can shop safely and comfortably from their own homes this holiday season while supporting many local businesses and nonprofits. The program is called, the social media program is called hashtag #shopatbristolct. The focus is on e-commerce, and rather than going on a website for a big box store or national chain, you can do it right through our social media with local merchants and nonprofits. Remember, the idea is to support those who support our community and who invest in our community. These local businesses, by supporting them, it's a win-win. These are the folks who support our kids, our Little Leagues, our social events, our nonprofits. They're people that we live with every day, and it's so important, especially this time of year, when the effects of the virus and COVID has affected retail overall. So we can use everybody's focus this year very much. You can also consider, if you're going to make year-end or holiday donations, consider keeping your money local as well. There's, through the United Way of West Central Connecticut, the Main Street Community Foundation, the Bristol Hospital Development Foundation, and so many others like our museums, who can use your support financially. And lastly, another sector of our economy that's suffering is our restaurants. Bristol's been very fortunate, because we've had a couple of new restaurants start up during COVID, and these are folks who are brave enough to invest in Bristol. I think it's great that we can go out and support them as well. So if you're not feeling comfortable while dining in, there's always a takeout service that most of these fine restaurants offer. So this year, more than ever, we're asking you to focus on Bristol, focus on our local business, and I think that's it, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Rosato, any announcements?
No.
Councilman Kelly, any announcements?
I do not, thank you.
Okay. I just have one to remind all of you that we are scheduled for Salvation Army to ring the bell on Saturday, December 19th. And also, we, as a city council, have each adopted a family through our Youth and Community Services Program. There are a lot of additional families that have asked for holiday help this year. They, if anybody is interested in doing so, you can call Kiana Anderson at the Parks and Rec Office. They will provide you with the first name of a child in a sheet that looks like this, and it will give pertinent information about gender, age, coat, shoes, clothes sizes, as well as some suggested gifts based on the input from the child. So this is actually Councilwoman Proleski's that I haven't had a chance to give you yet. And all of those gifts do need to get back to Youth and Community Services no later than next week. So if anyone is looking for some holiday spirit, that's a great way to give back to the community as well. As part of announcements, because we have several guests in the audience tonight, I'd like to ask the council to indulge with moving appointments from Agenda Item 10 to under announcements.
Move it.
Second.
Discussion. Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. So last month, we accepted the retirement of our chief building official, Tom Lozier, who is back in the audience tonight, in order to watch the appointment of his successor, which is Richard Brown. We would like to put forward the appointment of him as the chief building official for a four-year term, beginning on tomorrow, the 9th, to December of 2024. So first, we'd like to get that
So moved.
Motion?
Second.
Second. The motion's been made and seconded. We have had, Rick, you've been with us for two years?
Little over a year.
Little over a year. Seems like much longer, especially with code enforcement. So Rick comes to us with building experience. He's also jumped right in with code enforcement and plan reviews, and has been trained by Tom Lozier, and has actually played a large role in our relationship with Plainville as well, where we provide building services for a fee. So it is my pleasure to appoint him tonight and have a very seamless move throughout the building department. And it's been a fun week already, hasn't it? And I'd just like to ask you to come up and maybe introduce yourself. You have several of your new colleagues as department heads here as well, and I think that one of the beauties of the code enforcement process is that you get to work with so many people. So I'd like to take an opportunity, before we vote, to introduce Richard Brown.
Thank you. Mayor, that's forward. Thank you very much. Uh, I certainly look forward to working with all of the departments. Certainly Bristol sets the bar very high in the state of Connecticut, actually, for what we do. Uh, certainly a tremendous amount of talent. I look forward to working with them. Actually honored to be put in that category with you guys. Um, I certainly look forward to helping out all the residents and the property owners in Bristol as far as I can in any manner, um, as far as making it less of a hassle with building permits and so forth. Um, I actually enjoy working with the, um, code enforcement side of it. Um, might sound odd, but I do. Certain people just don't understand the relative importance of it. But again, I look forward very much to working with them. I certainly have a fervent desire for this job position and want to make it very prominent for the, the city of Bristol, actually, so.
Thank you, and thank you for staying for the meeting tonight.
Thank you.
Does anybody have any questions for Rick? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Okay. So while we're on appointments, we'll just run through the few that we have for December. We're gonna start it with the acting mayor, uh, to appoint Mary Fortier to replace Brittany Barney for a three-month term to March of 2021.
So moved.
Brittany is very anxious to be relieved of duty. Um, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. For the City Energy Commission, to reappoint David Buckus for a three-year term to December of 2023.
So moved.
Second. Discussion. Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. To the Housing Code Appeals Board, two appointments for tonight. The first, John Fitzgerald, for a three-year term to December 31st of 2023.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And the second is to reappoint Orlando Calfee for a three-year term, again, to 1231 of 2023.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next is to appoint Jerry Betts to replace Dorian Rossi for a three-year term to January of 2024, which Dorian was a Section 2-9 resignation.
For what board?
Library Commissioners, sorry.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. For Board of Park Commissioners, we have two reappointments tonight. The first is Robert Fiorito for a three-year term to December of 2023.
Move it.
Second.
Discussion. Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And next, to reappoint Paula O'Keefe, again, for a three-year term to December of 2023.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. For Board of Police Commissioners, to reappoint Terry Lewis for a three-year term to December of 2023.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And for the next set, we have the Sewer Commission and the Board of Water Commissioners. They are actually a combined board right now, but we are gonna do the appointments still separately. So the first set is the Board of Water Commissioners, to reappoint Kathy Ferrer for a three-year term to December of 2023.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And the second is to appoint Francis J. Perini Jr. to replace Robert A. Bedell, who asked to not be reappointed, for a three-year term to December of 2023.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. We'd just like to take a moment to wish Bob Bedell the best. He was a great commissioner for a number of years, and he has decided to step down to let somebody else serve and learn the role, and he will definitely be missed from the Water Commission. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And last, we have, um, our final appointment to the MBS Theater Task Force that we're doing, and that is the name of Mark Mazzarella to join the existing commission.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. At this point, we now have a vacancy on the Youth Commission. We're, we're looking to re, to find a new name as a citizen member. Uh, we've lost Tanya Ledesma for, um, work conflict and schedule issues that she's been a longtime member, and she, similar to Mr. Bedell, has decided to resign to allow somebody else to serve. So if anybody has any interest or knows of anyone who would like to serve as a citizen member of our Youth Commission, please contact my office. Okay, moving back up to Agenda Item Number Five, the Consent Calendar. Does anybody have any items that they'd like to pull off for further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Consent calendar is approved. Moving on to...
Your Honor, who made the motion for the consent calendar?
Is that Greg?
I believe it was Greg.
I believe it was Councilman Han.
Thank you.
Okay. Moving on to reports and committee reports, we're gonna start with the Ordinance Committee.
Thank you, Your Honor. Um, the Ordinance Committee held two public hearings and are referring to amendments to the code. I'd like to thank Councilmember Fortier for running the meeting and the public hearings for me. Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome.
And, uh, Councilman Han and Attorney Connolly. Um, the first amendment is, relates to Section 19, 19-16 through 19-20. I hereby move that Sections 19-16 through 19-20 subpoena power of Board of Police Commissioners, Police Force, method of appointment of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Bristol is hereby amended to read as presented. I further move that the city clerk publish said amendments and additions to the Code of Ordinances, and they become effective upon the expiration of 14 days from the date of their publication in a newspaper of general circulation in the city of Bristol. This mostly cleans up, uh, some of the, uh, routines, uh, language from Charter Revision and, um, appoints, changes the names of, um, arch captains to deputy chiefs.
Second.
Discussion. Chief, did you want to comment at all?
Good evening, Mayor, City Council, public. Uh, first, I want to say thank you very much for, uh, uh, working on that with me. I very much appreciate it. I think it's a very long overdue for our police department. Uh, we are certainly growing, and, um, the two individuals currently holding the captain rank, um, are just, uh, tremendous assets to my executive team. Uh, both of them, uh, stepped into the role a little over a year ago, and are just doing an outstanding job. And, um, this is very important for the makeup of the police department and our future as we grow. Uh, so having them to, uh, title change to deputy chief, uh, just makes sense for the position they're in, and, uh, I can't thank you enough for seeing that through. Much appreciated. Thank you.
Does that cause any ripple effects with any other titles or any other divisions?
Yes, so, uh, what, the next position that I would be looking to, uh, change at some point is we have a detective lieutenant, and, uh, I would be looking to make that into a captain role. Uh, that is something I will have to work on and negotiate with the union as that is a union position. But that's going to, uh, just further, uh, uh, build our department and, um, kind of get us, uh, in line with, with, uh, the standard operating business.
Thank you. Any questions of Chief Gould? Okay.
Thank you, thank you.
Hearing none, all in favor of the adoption for Section 19-16 to 19-19?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Moving on to B.
Your Honor, thank you. We have one more. Uh, I hereby move that Sections 2-33-2, excuse me, to 2-40 reserved, section of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Bristol is amended as presented. I further move that the city clerk publish said amendments and additions to the Code of Ordinances, and that they become effective upon the expiration of 14 days from the date of their publication in a newspaper of general circulation in the city of Bristol. And, Your Honor, this is a follow-up from the, uh, action taken by the, um, code enforcement about a year or so ago, and, um, this is a, the establishment of a personnel committee, which will be, will consist of five members, three council members and two of the, of the elected citizens of Bristol. And it's, uh, they're designed to, is provide advisory services to our human resources officer, and, um, the council may elect to, um, designate certain projects to them.
I do think you meant to say Charter Revision and not Code Enforcement.
Did I say Code Enforcement?
You did.
It's a mask. I can't think of the mask. It's too tight, I think, or something.
And I'll second that as amended.
I apologize. Thank you for that. Code enforcement.
Does anybody have any questions concerning the formation of the Personnel Committee as a approved Charter Revision item? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Next, we're gonna move on to the report from City Arts and Culture Commission and the Memorial Boulevard Theater Task Force. I did combine these committee reports since they're both Councilman Hans', and I know that the committees are working closely together. So I'll yield the floor to Councilman Han, who I believe has a motion to come forward.
Uh, yes, as part of this, uh, report, I, I really want to talk about, uh, how the Theater Task Force has gotten off on a good start. Uh, since the last, uh, city council meeting, uh, where we formed, uh, the task force, we've had two meetings. We had a special meeting in November to help organize our effort, and then we had our first monthly meeting. Um, what we've done is we've begun, we've begun planning the opening and ongoing use of the theater, taking into consideration that school will obviously have first priority on its use. Uh, to ensure that there's an open communication and common goals, uh, we've assigned task force member Liam McCabe as liaison to the Memorial Boulevard of the District Arts Magnet School Committee, that's a house school. Um, but so that there's free communication between our, our two committees and make sure there's, uh, uh, collective objectives. Uh, we're collecting tasks and milestones so that we can create a project plan with dates and dependencies, because a lot of the, uh, things that need to be done are time-sensitive. Uh, so it's important to keep track of all these things, and we're gonna do it in a very standard, uh, and I know Brittany can appreciate this project plan. We're looking into ways also to create an endowment for, among other things, maintenance to the theater. To do this, we're gonna be looking into contracting a person for grant writing and fundraising. This is going to be more and more important as we get close to opening the theater. Uh, the maintenance of the theater is not, uh, is very costly, and we want to make sure it's done correctly for such a, such a, uh, a class, it's gonna be a very classy, uh, theater. We have lots to do in addition to our, so in addition to our monthly meetings, which are held on the first Thursday of every month, we will be scheduling special meetings to discuss and make decisions on specific topics. I mention this because for anyone that wants to join us, these are our public, but from now on, um, uh, because it has hit close to home, uh, I'm going to be having all these meetings as Zoom meetings for the next couple months until we get by the, uh, the COVID crisis here, uh, so that everybody can feel safe. Uh, one last thing is we're looking to bring, uh, uh, the architect in and to one of our special meetings so that they can present the, uh, the, the plans for the theater, uh, so that the committee can see, uh, everything that's going to be happening. So that's, that's where we are with the, uh, task force at this point, but I've been very impressed with everybody on the task force, so I'm really looking forward to digging in, digging in further and moving this along quickly.
So for contin...
Your Honor, I, I see that we have the, uh, the motion under, uh, New Business, I believe. Uh, shall we?
Yes, I was gonna suggest bringing that up for continuity purposes. So we'll need a motion to move New Business, Item A, under the committee report.
So moved.
I'll make that motion.
Discussion. Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, and so your motion, Councilman Han.
Yes, in regards to one recommendation that the committee would like to make, I move that the city council endorse the naming of the theater as Rockwell Theater, and that this name is recommended to the Memorial Boulevard of the District Arts Magnet School Committee for adoption.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion on the motion?
I'd just like to mention that, um, uh, the name Rockwell Theater, uh, was discussed. We did discuss other options as well, and we, even to the point of getting a sponsor, but everything that we, we discussed, uh, did not, uh, did not make muster, and we, we really liked the idea of the Rockwell Theater because from a marketing perspective as well, people can go to have, see a concert at the Rock. Uh, so from our marketing perspective, it's also something that has legs as well. So we liked it for many, many reasons, of course, because Rockwell did create the theater and was such an iconic figure in Bristol.
Agreed. Thank you. Any other comments? All in favor of the endorsement and referral to the Building Committee?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. So now we will transfer this to you, Councilman Proleski, to bring forward to the Memorial Boulevard Building Committee.
Thank you, Your Honor.
Okay, going back up to, uh, committee reports, the report of the Code Enforcement Committee. I, I just wanted to briefly update the committee. We've had, uh, a lot of activity within the Code Enforcement Group. Um, two properties specifically, 267 Summer Street, which I did mention in my, uh, column on Monday. Um, work has stopped. The local contractor that had been hired by the New York Investment Group that has purchased 267 Summer Street in June of 2018, has again, um, decided to not pay and is going in a different direction. This is a very troubled property with, um, a building that sits entirely on its building envelope with no available parking to the, um, you know, dozen or so apartments that belong to that. It is directly across the street from the library, and it is a property of interest for us for many years based on, on the flow of what has happened there. Um, at this point, now that this latest arrangement has not worked out with the New York Investment Group and the local contractor, a very good reputation, that I was actually hoping something good would come of this, we are back to square one, and I just wanted to put the property on everyone's radar because you're going to be seeing us take some strong measures in the next few days. There is also a relocation lien that is existing, and I do not believe that the taxes are current. So stay tuned for that as all these other positive developments happen in and around the downtown corridor. We are gonna be focusing some energy on that after giving them two and a half years to attempt to get their act together. Uh, the other property of interest is one that is not, uh, one that has hit the radar before, but I thought it was a good example of what happens when large parcels of property change hands from responsible landlordship to non-responsible. Uh, we have 467 Farmington Avenue, which has about 28 units, um, kind of on the corner of Jerome at Route 6, uh, nestled in between that intersection and Mercier Avenue. There's also a single-family home that faces Mercier, and this has become, um, a multiple department-involved property, police, building, health, fire, um, zoning. It, it's just been a very difficult property, and that had recently changed hands in the last year or so. So there's a call scheduled tomorrow. I have reached out to the owner in New York to have some discussion about what's happening, and hopefully we can get that property back on track as well. Uh, we've also had a, a pet hoarding issue, which is unusual, but we had all hands on deck for that, which, uh, has been resolved, and then the usual types of, um, you know, apartment issues and sanitary conditions that are really the bread and butter of the Code Enforcement Committee that are continuing and are, um, every month, we revisit those and look at those addresses. So a lot of work is being done on that level, but these two were larger code enforcement issues that I wanted to make everyone aware of. If there's no questions, we will go on to, we have a item...
If there's no questions, we will go on to, we have an item to be brought on to the agenda for the Salary Committee.
Thank you, Your Honor. I would like to have, make a motion to bring an item for vote on to the agenda for the Salary Committee.
Second.
Discussion. Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
This motion refers to some reorganization that is scheduled for the Comptroller's Office and the Treasurer's Office, and it's quite an extensive, complicated reorganization. But this is just the change of title of one position of someone who is retiring. So this is, we're doing this this evening so that we'll be able to post this position as it is been amended. So the motion is to improve a change in title and pay code of the position of Accounting Clerk Treasurer's Office, which is a local 233 Salary Code Six, to a position of Treasury and Pension Coordinator, which is a local 233 Salary Code Eight, and to refer to the Board of Finance for Funding.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion?
I do just want to add that the difference in this for the annual salary for this position would be $7,614.
Can I just ask, so with that salary change, are they also receiving more job duties?
Yes. The job title itself includes Pension Coordinator. They're going to be dealing with the pension-
Calculations.
Calculations. And I do have the full job description, which I can send to you if you'd like to see the changes.
So Councilman Barney, just as a refresher, the larger reorganization of the Treasurer, Pension, Payroll and Benefits, three, three offices, has the elimination of two positions and some redistribution of duties. This is one of them. The reason that this is before us right now is because the previous occupant of the position has retired, and so we're moving to post the position to fill it. And instead of doing it at the old rate, we were just trying to expedite it to do it at the new rate, so we wouldn't have to go back and fix it in the future.
Makes sense. I just thought for the benefit of, you know, anyone that's watching-
Yep.
-that it's important to note that it's not just, you know, a change of salary and an increase to someone's salary. It's also a complete change of job duties and an increase in job duties, which in any kind of organization, you would expect to receive compensation for the additional duties that you're now hiring for. So the role has completely changed. I just kind of wanted to clarify that for anyone else that was listening that might not know what we know.
We do have the Controller and the Human Resources Director still here as well. So if there's any other members of the council either on screen or here in chambers, if you'd like further clarification from what Councilman Fortier discussed, we can have that conversation. Does everybody remember the discussion from last month, and are we good with this? Okay. If there's no further discussion, then all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay. Moving on to Agenda Item Seven, unfinished business. I just wanted to update everyone on some of our COVID initiatives. We meet every other week with our department heads in a emergency management meeting setting. That meeting was this morning. There were some interesting facts reflected in what we're seeing for the spike throughout the state and the country, and it has hit Bristol as well. Our numbers are over nineteen-hundred. We've had about a hundred and something new cases just since last week. And within our City Hall and employment base, for the first time ever, we have multiple agents, department agencies involved. At Fire, we have five that are out. Three are awaiting test results. One is positive. One, we are still waiting to hear the status. Let's see. Board of Education continues to struggle with getting bodies into the classrooms. They currently have fifty-four professional staff in quarantine. The Purchasing Office has all three employees out due to the close contact of a positive. Public Works Yard, we have two positives at our transfer station. Police currently has one in quarantine. Water and Sewer has one positive. And in Parks, we have five that are out in quarantine. One is positive. One is pending test results. Our Benefits and Payroll Office has also been affected, so we have them quarantined and working remotely. And our entire Corporation Council's office is working remotely as well, and you can see that reflected on the screen tonight. So we, from that, we are looking to ensure that we have our appropriate strategies and resources in place, if in fact, we have to pivot back to some of the actions we took in the spring. The most important factor to stress is that we have had very few employee-to-employee infections. In fact, I think there's just two, maybe three. One is, I think, still pending. What's happening, though, is what our employees and are doing and the rest of the community, the adults are doing outside of their employment is now being brought back. And Thanksgiving actually is directly linked to two of these positive cases within our City Hall employees as well. So it's just a great message to get out there that we're trying very hard. We have a plan so that we will continue to provide essential services. But we have to be very cognizant that we are going to continue to see additional cases, and we're going to have to continue to work with our Health District, who has been with us through this whole thing in terms of close contacts and contact tracing, to look at these higher-risk cases so that we can really cut off any type of future spread. They're also working with the state contact tracing entity, so there's some division of responsibilities there. Many of you have probably seen that there's some CDC regulations that are now saying that there's quarantine options that can be reduced. The Bristol Burlington Health District is using some of those reduction options that can be utilized. So one of them is, is that without symptoms, you can test out for a seven-day quarantine instead of fourteen, if you're not exhibiting symptoms, if there's the availability of testing in the community, if there's nobody in your household that has tested positive, and that you can get that negative result. So for our critical infrastructure, this is going to be very impactful, because right now, we've had members of our Public Works, Police, Fire, Water and Sewer, all of whom have critical functions, out for fourteen days, and then taking other employees with them to do contact tracing. So there's another option for ten days. This is only going to be available for our employees who fall under the jurisdiction of the Health District, so anybody with residence in Bristol and Burlington. None of the other Health Districts to date are opting to look at these as options. We also discussed the fact that there is going to be, the COVID vaccine is going to be available to the healthcare workers and the whole rollout list, which then transitions into at-risk and critical infrastructure over the next two months. It's going to be available as soon as next week. We are aware that Bristol Hospital is receiving a shipment. We know that Community Health Centers on North Main Street is going to be distributing the vaccine. And we also know that our Bristol Burlington Health District will have supply as well. It is my assumption, based on my previous life, that if the pharmacists have now been given the opportunity to immunize, that we will most likely also see those vaccines available in our pharmacies as well, which will be another great point of access. We definitely owe some thanks to our CERT team. They have been out volunteering with the Community Health Centers and providing traffic flow at the Center Square parking lot for the last twenty-two days. And we are hoping that once the entire testing process moves down to this parking lot, so the cars are no longer traveling from the staging to the Community Health Center, that they will be able to enact a parking attendant plan and relieve our CERT members of this duty. What's going to happen is testing for COVID will occur at Center Square. You might have seen the trailers moving in that they're going to have to, for their supplies, and they are going to convert Community Health Centers up on North Main Street for vaccination purposes. I think PPE for our departments is still available, so if anybody needs anything, they need to go see Harley Graham, our Emergency Management Director. And our IT department is working on accessing additional laptops for anybody who may need to work at home. And one of the additional apps that we're going to have that we did not have access to in the spring was that they're going to have software that is embedded on those laptops called Jabber, where they'll be able to answer their office phones from their laptop. So for continuity of business operation, that, that is going to be something that will definitely be an added bonus. Last night, I issued an update to our department heads, which I copied members of the council on, so that you will see what we're encouraging all of our supervisors and department heads to do. The biggest, biggest message is that the supervisors and managers have to ensure that if someone is not feeling well, they stay home. It doesn't matter whether it is simply you're feeling a little off, or you have some congestion, or your throat is tickling you. We've had three occasions where employees have come to work not feeling well, which has now created this firestorm of quarantining and close contacts. They have generous sick-time packages, and this is what it's for. So part of that memo from last night covered what we're expecting from them and letting them know from kind of a futuristic look of where we're going and what they can do to start preparing their departments for potential strategies if the spike continues to affect us as a City Hall operation. I think that's all I have for our COVID update, unless anybody has any questions or concerns.
Your Honor?
Yes.
I, I did see in the update, and I thank you for bringing it up tonight, too, that you're going to be transitioning some laptops over to staff.
Yes.
Just because I'm a remote worker and I have been since 2018, I mean, having the laptop, I think, makes a big difference, because, you know, the city does need to continue to function. We can't just send people home without a way to work. So I don't know, I'm not familiar with the capital plans for any replacement of technology, but I just hope that we consider it as we go forward with this, that we create a better infrastructure so that we can send people home to work remotely, just to, you know, have a, to be able to deal with something like this again. But I think it's probably exposed to a lot of different city governments and other kinds of businesses, the need to have the ability to quickly make workers remote, because it's important to keep people, you know, involved so that we can keep the city running. So I know there's some folks that that wouldn't save, you know, the Fire Department has to be there, the Police Department has to be there. But if we could save some of our other employees from City Hall to have, to, you know, be able to work from home remotely instead of having to go in the office, I think it's a great value. And I was happy to see the city's moving in that direction, but just hoping we can continue that momentum.
Yep, we have some orders placed, and we've accelerated the purchasing of some of those items per the budget plan for the IT department. So that's what we're expecting this week, and that's what will be transitioned next week. And then I'll defer to Diane, but I think our lease, we have some lease considerations that are just coming up as part of the normal calendar for the spring, which will also play into how we roll out future purchases or leases of equipment as well. We learned a lot from the spring. In fact, even these computers that we use on the dais were repurposed for employees to go home. And at one point, we had pulled out all of the registrar-voter computers that they use on election days, and we thought we would have to use those as well. Didn't come to that, but we did have a plan. The one that the IT department has refined over the last few months, I think, will be more robust and, and deliver a better quality of working at home as opposed to what last time.
Great. Yeah, thanks to all the city staff that have been working so hard. And we know you're all considered essential, even if you're not wearing a lab coat and going into a medical facility. So thank you for your hard work.
Thank you. If there's any other unfinished business?
I, I have a committee report, Your Honor.
Oh, did I skip you?
You did.
Oh, that wasn't intentional.
No, I know that. All right. I, I have a school readiness report, and it's, it's quite impactful.
Is it long and impactful, or just impactful?
No, you already covered that prior. We've, we've amended it. In September, the Office of Early Childhood, which is in Hartford, started to use a different formula to reimburse programs monetarily. And it was recognized by Mary Alice Petraselli-Timak and school readiness council members, early childhood personnel, that this was a flawed formula that they were using. And they sensed that that reduction in getting compensated would affect Bristol, but more importantly, it was really going to be a death knell for larger cities, since they have so many more students that are affected. So led by Mary Alice and the liaisons, they tried to get the OEC, Office of Early Childhood, to recalibrate their formula. And initially, they did not, but Mary Alice and the other women were persistent. So they acquiesced and actually modified their stance, which allowed acceptable reimbursement for the programs. And to the OEC's credit, they also took other steps to help these programs continue on monetarily. So just, just to quantify exactly what Mary Alice and the other ladies did, this, had they not recalibrated their formula for repayment, it would have cost Bristol over $173,000. But statewide, it would have cost Bridgeport over $207,000, Hartford almost $465,000, and Waterbury $340,000. So counting four cities, that's over a million dollars. So had Mary Alice and the other ladies not have been persistent, this could have really been catastrophic. So their persistence and their institutional knowledge really saved a catastrophe, actually statewide. So I think it's important they're acknowledged for that.
Yeah, we're very fortunate to have Mary Alice as our school readiness coordinator. She's one of the top ones, if not the top, in the state. And I was on the call with Commissioner By and some of the other childcare providers. Just in the month of September, Bristol Preschool and Imagination Museum lost a combined $15,000 due to the lack of funding to cover those classrooms. And we all know that for working families, daycare is a major issue. And so for them to potentially have to close or reduce their hours would have been catastrophic to a lot of working families. So it was a great conversation, and I think moving forward, even, I believe, the latest email from Mary Alice also noted that if there is any type of shutdown or reduction of hours, that they are still going to be funded at this, at the same level, which is critical, because a lot of these programs are not receiving a parent share. That program is not funding anymore. So I think that it's one of those departments that we don't hear a lot about, because it's funded almost entirely by a state grant, but it's one that has significant impact, as Peter noted, in the community. So thank you.
And, and, Your Honor, I don't know if you're aware of it, but Mary Alice is going to be retiring in just over a year. So we really have to pay a lot of attention to her, who's going to take over, because it just can't be a pedestrian replacement. We need someone that's impactful and has that institutional knowledge.
Yes. Yep. Councilman Rosato, is there anything from the Parks Department you'd like to share?
Yes, Your Honor, definitely. I'd like to congratulate our Bristol Parks Recreation, Youth and Community Service Director, Josh Maderos. He has recently completed an exam to become a Certified Parks and Recreation Executive with the National Recreation and Parks Association. This is the highest certification one can receive. He joins one of four people in Connecticut and one of 250 people in the entire country. Josh, it's a job well done, and congratulations. Just exemplifies the leadership we have in that department, as well as all of our other departments within our city. I also want to mention that the Muzzy Field renovations are complete, with the exception of some minor restroom enhancements and fence replacements that will be taking place over the winter and spring. We look forward to the 2021 season, providing all the COVID releases and everything that we can get through. So look forward to it.
Thank you. Are there any other committee reports? All right, any other unfinished business? Any other new business? Okay, we'll go to nine resignations.
There's one resignation, Your Honor, and it's from Tanya Ledesma from the Youth Commission.
Okay. Thank you. I'd like a motion to send a letter of thanks for service.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Moving on to the second piece of our agenda, we are going to have a resolution for Agenda Item 11. If, Councilman Fortier, if you could get that ready. Agenda Item 11 is a resolution regarding the- get that ready. Agenda Item 11 is a resolution regarding the approval of agreement between the Water Department and City of Bristol relating to the payment of debt service and financing costs for the bonds, notes, and temporary notes and obligations issued to finance the costs of the upgrade of the City of Bristol Water Department's existing supervisory control and data acquisition system.
I do have the resolution, Your Honor. Resolved that the agreement between the Water Department and the City of Bristol relating to the payment of debt service and financing costs for the bonds, notes, and temporary notes and obligations issued to finance the costs of the upgrade to the City of Bristol Water Department's existing supervisory control and data acquisition SCADA system substantially in the form presented to this meeting is hereby approved. The mayor or acting mayor is hereby authorized to execute and deliver such agreement with such changes as the mayor or the acting mayor may approve, and the signature of the mayor or the acting mayor on such agreement shall be conclusive evidence of such approval.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there a discussion of the motion? Hearing none. It is a resolution with a roll call vote, starting on my far left.
Yes.
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 Yes. Councilwoman Barney?
Yes.
Councilman Han?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. Moving on to Agenda Item 12, Award of Contract 2P20-062: Professional Services Relative to the Design and Preparation of Construction Documents for Reconstruction of Wilkett Street to A1 Engineers, Inc., for $165,000 and the authorization for the mayor or the acting mayor to execute.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion on the motion. Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item 13 is to approve the city's submission of a substantial amendment to its annual action plan to HUD to address the COVID-19 pandemic by accepting a CARES Act grant known as the CDBG CV-3 from the Housing and Urban Development Federal Government. So this is interesting. This is our third round, when normally, we only have one round of CDBG. In the spring, we did our traditional dispersment to our agencies and for projects. And then shortly thereafter, the second round, we, it was probably most of it, went to St. Vincent de Paul so that they could do their construction in order to allow additional people to be able to come into the shelter and address a bunch of fire code and building issues. This third round now came out in the fall. We just concluded the public hearings, and there are about a dozen agencies that are going to be getting a substantial lift with this CARES Act money through the CDBG. Two of them are actually Imagination and Bristol Preschool to follow up on the conversation that we just had about school readiness programs, as well as many others. So I believe we have, does somebody have the motion ready?
I do have that, Your Honor. Be it resolved to approve the city's submission of a substantial amendment to its annual action plan to HUD to address the COVID-19 pandemic by accepting a CARES Act grant known as CDBG CV-3 from HUD and using said funds for the following allocations. I will read them unless...
Yes, please.
Okay. Number one, Shepherd Meadows Therapeutic Writing Center for $20,000. Two, Imagination Museum Early Learning Center, $75,000. Three, United Way of West Central Connecticut, $10,293. Number four, HRA of New Britain, $30,000. Five, New England Carousel Museum, $8,500. Six, Bristol Preschool Childcare Center, $75,000. Seven, St. Vincent de Paul Mission, $34,000. Eight, Bristol Boys and Girls Club, $40,000. Nine, for goodness' sake, a one-year award of $10,000. Number 10, Zion Lutheran Church Meals for Neighbors, $3,400. Administrative expenses, $76,548, for a total of $382,741. Be it further resolved, excuse me, my mouse moved, be it further resolved that the mayor or acting mayor be authorized to sign any and all documents related to the submission of this substantial amendment and its obligations, and to forward this information to the Board of Finance for action.
Is there a second?
Second.
So all of these agencies are applying for COVID-related expenses, and we're going to have opportunities to talk about those various action items in the future. All of the council members have homework assignments in terms of what you need to do with your liaison agencies for this, and we need to get that done. So for those of you who haven't done it, and I'll just say the only person who has is Councilman Han. Thank you, Councilman Han. Put that on your list of things to do, because we need to get that going. There's no other questions or concerns about the CDBG CV-3? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. So that concludes our public agenda. We do have four items for executive session. Item 14 is an executive session regarding the litigation matter of McIntyre Company versus the City of Bristol, docket HHB CV-20-6059765S. And then we have a second tax litigation matter, and the matter of Bristol Sports Center DST, a Delaware Statutory Trust versus City of Bristol, docket HHB CV-186044354S. I'll pause here so Corporation Council Clift can tell us who will be joining us in executive session and on that executive session call for these two items.
Okay, thank you, Your Honor. For these two items, I'd like to have us be joined by Tom Conlin, Assistant Court Counsel, and also our assessor, Tom DiNoto. And did you want me to also mention the other two on the addenda?
So for the first two, it will be yourself, Assistant Corporation Counsel Tom Conlin, and our assessor, Tom DiNoto.
Correct.
On both of them?
Yes.
Okay. And then moving on to our addenda, we have two items. The first is an executive session to discuss an impact bargaining agreement concerning the payroll and pension supervisor. And the second one is the executive session to discuss a separation agreement concerning the accounts payable receivable supervisor. These are both related to the treasurer benefits controller office reorganization. And for these, who will be coming in on these two?
Okay, they will be our Human Resources Director, Mark Penny, and myself.
Okay. Okay, so I'd like to have a motion to go into executive session for Agenda Item 14 and 15 on the main agenda, as well as Agenda Items 1 and 2 on the addenda. So moved.
Second.
Second.
Before we vote, do we need the Controller to be in on the addenda items 1 and 2?
I would certainly not object to that. I didn't know if she was going to be here tonight, but she's here, absolutely.
Would you like to join us in executive session? Okay, so we will amend the vote to reflect that the Controller will be joining us on the addenda items of 1 and 2. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. So what are the logistics on this? What are we doing now?
Okay, so first of all, who is, is Tom DiNoto there present?
He's present in chambers, yes. So...
Oh, good. And Mark Penny?
Yes.
Okay, so what should happen first is that, let's see, Tom DiNoto should join the rest of the councilors who are there into the executive, the executive session room.
And then we'll call from there?
And then you have the information, the number to call, so I will get that ready. And then any counselor who is, you know, also there remotely, you have those, that number and that access code. Once that one's finished, then we just simply need Mark Penny and Diane Waldron to substitute for Tom.
Okay. All right, so we're going to, those of us that are here in chambers will adjourn to the meeting room, and then we will connect with a conference call to those that are online. We will then switch out those in attendance to do the other two. We will then come back out into chambers and resume our meeting.
We're going to get ready. Here comes Brittany's on now. Okay. So I'm going to ask for a motion to reconvene into public session.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Let the record indicate that there were no votes taken in executive session. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Are there any motions to come forward from executive session?
Your Honor, regarding Agenda Item 14, we have a motion.
Okay.
In the matter of McIntyre Company versus the City of Bristol, docket number HHB CV-206059765S, we move to approve a stipulated settlement to amend the 2019 grand list value of the subject property to $2,230,000 and authorize the assessor to make said adjustment.
Second.
Discussion on the motion. Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Are there any other motions to come before the council?
Your Honor, I have two motions for the addenda items. Motion 1 on the addenda, the motion is to approve an impact bargaining agreement concerning the payroll and pension supervisor and refer to the Board of Finance.
Is that for informational purposes? Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion. Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Okay, motion carries.
Item 2 on the addenda, the motion is to approve a separation agreement concerning the accounts payable receivable supervisor and refer to the Board of Finance for informational purposes.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion. Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. That concludes our business for tonight. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, everyone.